So I'll start with, uh, is it Michael? I'll start with you first. And the first question is, the last question, I'll start with you, Jared. From Michael, so I'll start with you first.
Okay.
So if we're ready, we're ready to roll. So let's go ahead and start. Uh, thank you for being here for the District Seven Council interview in North Memphis. Appreciate you being here. And I'll start with one question here designed to give you a chance to talk about your overall views. And that is, why are you running? And what are you going to do with the life that I'll start with you, Michael.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Michael Easter Thomas, running for City Council, District Seven. And one of the main reasons that I'm running for this seat is because politics is about service. And especially in District Seven, we have not had that direct service given towards the majority of the neighborhoods. So these neighborhoods include ones who don't get as much of the progress, such as North Memphis, Nutbush, Douglas, Longtown immigrant, Chelsea, Hollywood, Hyde Park. These are places that have not seen tangible progress in their areas. And really, it comes down to who's prioritizing us. And I say us, I've lived there, I'm a native, I've been there all my life, went away and came back, and we're still seeing the same issues. So the main reason that I'm running is service, because we need that desperately in District Seven. And we also need an honest and trustworthy representative who's going to deliver that service to us in District Seven.
Same question, Jared.
I'm running because I think it's time that we shine a light on communities and issues that haven't been to the forefront and the priority of our current representation. Many communities that she mentioned, and then including, you know, Smoky City, Klondike, New Chicago, these communities haven't had a voice, they haven't had representation. It looks, there's a very stark contrast when you look at, you know, areas of Midtown and Downtown compared to these communities. It looks like you're in a totally different world. I serve as Memphis beautiful, Memphis City beautiful Commissioner right now. And we go in, we do, you know, volunteer time, we clean up, we, you know, do beautification projects. And in that, in that time that I've spent in that role, I've met a lot of people and they feel like they haven't had the voice. Their representation isn't attentive, their representative is not accessible, and he's not, um, he's not out in the communities. And so I think it's time that we have someone up there that's not going to just appreciate the title, but also deliver the service that's required behind this position.
You both have referenced the current representative, and I just want to add that Burlingoy just emailed me a little bit ago to say that he couldn't make it because he had committee meetings. This is the council day, so I just wanted to make sure we made that point out of transparency and fairness to the City Council. Let me come back to the first question, as both of you have talked about the contrast between parts of the district, Harbertown, Downtown, Midtown, and other parts of it. You reference, uh, Bush, Frazier, New Chicago, et cetera. Tell me about how you, as an elected representative, would seek to bridge that gap between the two communities you described, the As and the Hap, and how would you try to give more resources to those areas that are not showing criminal gangs and affluence, or shops, or housing, et cetera. So, shoot, Michael.
So one, we have to attribute what's already being done in these areas. It isn't as though these neighborhoods are just ghost towns waiting on someone to come save them. It's people there, community groups, community leaders, already doing work that could further be supported by someone who prioritizes them in city government. So we have community CDCs, we have churches doing the work around youth, mental health services, as well as home improvements. We have developments that have been slated to come towards Klondike and also Frazier. These things should be prioritized and held with city representation. So one way of doing that is, one, being accessible, being willing to listen to those who are already doing the work in District Seven and seeing what they need to be supported, instead of coming in with outsider ideas of what a community may need. Because we need to ensure that whatever progress we bring along, that that's going to directly benefit those inhabitants already there, that they won't be displaced, and they won't need to feel like they're out in their own neighborhood when progress comes.
Same question to you, Jared.
I think it's going to be a matter of having a representative that fights for those communities instead of just somebody who's interested in their own pocketbook or own special interest. I think it's going to be a matter of working with this local, like, like Michael said, working with local CDCs, nonprofit organizations. I tell people all the time, I ask for people's vote, but I also want to give back as much as I ask for. And I do want to give back to being an informed representative. That's why I've gotten to know and worked with so many nonprofits, so many CDCs, because I want to be a resource to be able to uplift as many people as I can. There's programs like America Works, Building Memphis, Lift Memphis, that offer programs that help bring people up. And once, once you're running for office, you're supposed to be of service. So when you see people, like a mom that needs, you know, help with a daycare because she's working at two jobs, being a councilman who's informed about programs like Boys and Girls Club, where children can go for $10 a year after school to receive tutoring and play games and have snacks and stuff like that, and telling them that there is resources out there that are $10 a year versus paying $100 a week in daycare. To be that resource is really going to help with bringing people up. I also think that bridging the gap between areas like Harbertown and, say, New Chicago is also going to take somebody who understands city government and how the programs work and how they need to be tweaked. I think creating affordable housing for these communities is vital for better education and lowering crime. I think that our plan to help increase funding for CDCs that will help with affordable housing and help with these communities is, is the reason that Memphis Area Association of Realtors endorsed us, because they understand the need for homeownership that protects people from being kicked out of their neighborhood, from out of town investors. I think the Memphis Police Association's endorsement understands that we understand what it's going to take to get crime deterred in these neighborhoods and our innovative ideas for fighting crime. So once you focus on redevelopment, keeping people in their neighborhoods that call that place home, but also creating programs and investing in the CDCs that are going to be able to help bring those neighborhoods up and lift all Memphisans, I think that's what it's going to take to help drive from Harbertown to Klondike and not see such a stark contrast.
So let's, let's dive into some issues right now. I'm going to start with opportunity youth. Those folks, mostly young men and boys aged between 16 and 24, who are neither in school nor employed. Memphis has one of the highest rates of opportunity for the nation, in fact, the highest. What would you do in terms of programming to address that issue? First off, is that an issue for you and your communities, and how would you address it? I'll start with you again, Michael.
So as a high school, public school educator, I see these issues every day. And not only with the young men and the young women who are facing these problems of homelessness, unemployment, malnourishment. There, you also see the plight of their families coming in along with them. So you have two, three, not just the young men who are unemployed, but you have two, three generations in the same household who are dealing with unemployment, or who are trying to figure out who's going to work the shifts, second and third, so that someone can stay home to watch the younger siblings. Or this grandmother has to go back to work, and everybody's check is coming in to pay the rent or to pay high utility rates because of unweatherized homes or increasing fees on M and G W bills. So not only do we need more consistent and stable workforce training, also other options for college and career readiness. SCS has already made its commitment to black boys, we at our school and a lot of other schools have as well. I've worked and talked with some of the SCS board members and talked about different things that we can support in the community. But all in all, we have to change the narrative around our youth in this city. We have to provide more opportunity, and we also have to make them feel as though they are welcome and not destitute. It's a lot of places where these youths go, where they do not feel welcome, they do not feel wanted, and they do not feel needed in this city. And a lot of those places are in the forefront of the issue. When we talk about Downtown, Apopla, Polard, they don't feel welcome in certain areas. And especially when they're going back to their own neighborhoods, they don't have these employment opportunities. When they find one, they don't have the public transportation to get there, and their schools are underfunded so that they cannot get the opportunities they need. So all the way around, we need to ensure that we're providing some services for our youth, not just young black men, but the, but the young women as well. And then also knowing that their families, and the plight of their families in these neighborhoods, especially in District Seven, that we need to support, are not going to positively impact the trajectory of this student or that youth if their all-around environment does not change and the all-around narrative around young black youth in this city does not change.
Sounds like you're describing what, to me, sounds like a Marshall Plan for addressing opportunity youth and issues of black youth in town, so interesting. Jared, same question to you about opportunity youth and what your plans will be.
First, to answer your question, yes, directly, it is an issue, it's a major issue with youth and what path they get to take in life, not what path they choose, but what path they get. A lot of people, a lot of, I live on Poplar, and I live right down from the Union Mission, in between St. Mary's and the Union Mission, and I see a lot of these homeless youth. They walk by my house or on my sidewalk or my yard or, or doing yard work. And I, they'll stop and talk to me, they'll ask, can I work for some money? These people want an opportunity. I just think that our city needs to do a better job investing, as I said prior, about the nonprofits and the programs, investing in those and marketing those programs to reach more Memphisans. A lot of these kids that I see and I talk to, they don't, they don't even know these programs exist. There's America Works, there's programs that has, that they take homeless youth and they take homeless individuals, and they help them with a resume, they help them with job training, they help them get school, or close for interviews. But then you also have high school students that, you know, aren't quite, they are not at high school, they are in youth, and they feel like the only path that they have is to, after school is, they have no programs, they have no, no opportunities to go out and do, you know, things with other kids. So they end up to, you know, going down a path that they wouldn't choose if they had the right opportunities. As a single, as a child to a single mother, my mom worked two jobs. And she spent a lot of time working, and so I understand what it's like to not have a parent there and have that opportunity to, or have that chance to go down the wrong path or you can go down the right path. I think our city needs to invest more in reaching our youth, giving them more job training, or more summer job programs, more youth programs throughout the entire year, not just summertime. And I think that once we reach more Memphisans and get a better understanding of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, those, those actual incidences are what really can steer a child down a wrong path. Adverse childhood experiences are very detrimental. I'm a child who had adverse childhood experiences. And I can tell you that, you know, in my life, I had the opportunity to go down the wrong path. But thank God above, I didn't, and I had the right people there for me, but I think a lot of people don't. And I think understanding those experiences, understanding the mental health behind our students and behind our youth is something that our city needs to invest more in, get behind programs that help deter that path in life that they could go down.
Okay.
I'm talking about just being, apologize for late, I said an earlier appointment, it took longer than I thought it would. But anyhow, it seems like you all may have already dealt with my question. And normally, what I ask people when they come here is, competing with the streets. You know, they have, the, the, a lot of people have come here, the mayor in particular, said that there's like, what, thousands of jobs in field, people don't have the skills enough. You have Southwest that's training kids and people on the skills, you know, that have the skills, and they have programs that go in field. Why are these kids missing out on these programs? Where's the disconnect? See, uh, you were, I'm sorry, where's the disconnect? Why don't they know about this? And if they do, why don't they, why are they not taking advantage of it?
I think a lot of it has to do with, as I mentioned, the programs aren't reaching the communities that don't have that voice. I think it's the communities that need it the most that don't care to the most. And I think that the city needs to do a better job. You know, they post up online or on Facebook, on Instagram, on Twitter about, oh, we've got this program, or we've got that program. But a lot of these kids don't even have access to the internet in these communities. They don't have the means of cell phones or social media. So I think our city needs to do a better job in really investing in those communities, but putting, you know, getting people to go out and market differently. One of the things that I, it kind of goes back to the Memphis 3.0 point. A lot of these communities said they felt like their voice wasn't heard. I went to a meeting with the New Chicago CDC, and I showed up there and I said, you know, I turned around, and the 3.0 representatives were there, and I was there, and I said, can I ask the audience a question? They said, yeah. And I said, how many of you have heard of these 3.0 meetings through social media or Facebook or anything? And all of them looked at me, and nobody raised their hand. And I turned around to 3.0's marketing team, and I said, this is why this community isn't involved. You can't assume that you market the same way you do in Harbertown, that you do in New Chicago, Klondike, Smoky City, Douglas. It's the same thing with those programs. They're missing the opportunity to reach the people that are needing them the most.
Can I follow up quickly, and maybe for both of you? How would you then market to a community like New Chicago or Klondike? How would you market the, the, the way you described is not working? What would you do?
Well, the solution that I proposed, and this is on my website, jaredfries.com, is talking about investing in nonprofits and the programs that are already existing. So basically, I would propose that, once on council, I would like to be on the Budgetary Committee, review how much money we fund toward nonprofits and programs that are deemed effective. Have a board or a committee that reviews what programs reach the most people right now and can be the most effective towards the issues that are at hand, and then invest more into those. We spend money, like $40,000, the City Council came up with randomly, to fight IRV. They created a, a $40,000 fund randomly, pulled $40,000 out of thin air to fight IRV and say, no, we don't want IRV. Why can't we pull $40,000 and invest in marketing to outreach and kids in neighborhoods and stuff like that? If we've got money to fight up, to run a campaign against IRV, which was supported by 70% of Memphis voters, we can pull $40,000 to hire people to go knock on doors, send mailers out into the mail into these communities, and not just focus on internet stuff and internet marketing, that some of these communities can't even reach the internet.
You have a chance to respond as well if you want to.
Right, so kind of merging both of those questions, competing, kids competing with jobs in the streets, and also our young adults. We have to think about what people may see as easier to do, what they see as more accessible, what appeals to them, what feels like they can actually get it done. Making money in the street might be easier or more appealing than training for a certain amount of time, ascribing to societal norms, and then going through a legitimate employment process. And then also, you have to think about for these youth, what do they see the adults doing in their lives? What do they see provided for the adults in their lives? When you see that your mother's generation and your grandmother's generation, or your aunt and your uncle are also dealing with mental problems, health problems, unemployment problems, insurance issues, you're looking at that, is that something that I really want to ascribe to when I can take these ABC options in the streets and turn it into something else? And a lot of people in our neighborhoods in District Seven know about a lot of these programs. A lot of them walk by them daily, a lot of them go into these gyms, such as MAM, or Boys and Girls Club, Community Center, the libraries, they know about these programs. You have to see how to make it enticing and appealing to where somebody wants to change their mindset. And that's going to take the camaraderie of everyone in the community, in the neighborhood, to try to work together to get that sort of information out. So the information about the programs are there, they're being dispersed. But it's about how can we make this attainable for you? And how can we make it feel like it's something that you're going to want to do, as well as with the other adults in your lives? Because everybody has to play a part. Because if you have conflicting paths in your own home, it's going to be very, very hard for you to go down a path that's deemed by society as the right one.
I have a question about crime. We've had many discussions around this room with candidates for a variety of districts, as well as the Merrill race. And crime comes up as the number one issue on the part of the city, no matter where you live or what race it is. So the question is about specifically in Memphis. We're on a pace this year to have over 200 homicides, and that's, of course, lower than the record year in 2016. But still, it worries, it worries so many, a number of homicides for this community. How would you address violent crime, homicide rate, and crime in general in your district? And I'll start with Jared.
We've laid out some pretty specific things on our, in my platform, because it's something I hold near and dear to my heart. And I think that's understood, because, I mean, we've received Memphis Police Association because they believe in our campaign and our ability to really deter crime and help get to the root causes of what causes this crime. And it all starts in the community, it all starts at home, it starts with education. Education is the biggest thing when deterring crime. Homeownership and building up community is what deters crime. If you increase homeownership, you increase pride in your neighborhood. You have people that bond together, they watch after each other. Education, test results, education, schools, the kids do better when you live in a home that's owned by a family versus rental, in neighborhoods that are predominantly rental homes as well. It also comes down to investing in affordable homeownership, as I said, through these nonprofit, through the CDCs, to increase, to increase that homeownership. Memphis Police and I met, you know, and, and, once we got endorsed by them, I talked to them in, in, in long terms about how, what they see as crime and how we can have help affect it the most. And they said it all starts down to very early years in home. They said, you know, that Alex had mentioned earlier, adverse childhood experiences that can deter them. You know, they can put somebody down a wrong path if they don't get the right mental health, right tutoring, right counseling, right, you know, right outreach that they need. I think a lot of it has to also do with making sure that we have a properly funded, or not properly funded, but a properly staffed police department. If you have a, if we have a 400 officer shortage like we do, if you or I called 911, the response rate is a lot slower than it would be if we had a complete force that's completely staffed, as it should be. You know, we, we also need to start looking at innovative new ideas as far as how we fight crime. The gun listening devices, when in a neighborhood that they mount to poles and throughout the neighborhood, they detect a gunshot, the technology sends it to the nearest patrol car instantly versus somebody hearing the gunshot, then going to call a police, then the police having to get a call from the call center, then responding to it. In that time, your burglar or your, or your robber's already gone. If you hear a gunshot in a home, this device is instant to the nearest patrol car. You might be able to catch that criminal a lot faster, get that criminal off the street and prosecute it versus them getting away and still being able to make their next victim. But it, like I said, it all stems mainly down to education, and it stems down to homeownership. Because when you get homeownerships and you build communities, everything turns around. Pride in neighborhoods turns around, education gets better, people go down a lot better path in life once you develop those, those things. So I think that's why, that and, and homeownership and new, new innovative ideas fighting crime is what it's really going to take.
Same question, Michael.
Well, crime has been an issue in Memphis. And what we need in representatives are people that are going to try different things. But the main thing with crime is that we have to talk about poverty. It doesn't matter how much education you have, it's always an opportunity to make the wrong decision when you are faced by the ails of poverty. So when you are hungry, when you are unemployed, when your home is falling down, when your streets are cracked, when the buildings around you are closed and empty, and the streets is an option, it always comes back to poverty. So we have to see, how can we support our neighborhoods in the most need? And a lot of those are in District Seven, in the northern part of the city, especially around where I live and where I grew up. And how can we really try to implement some practices and some partnerships through MPD, through the community, and also city government, to where we can start attacking poverty? Because until we really look at that, then the crime rate is not going to go down. And if it is, and poverty is not decreasing at the same time, then it's a disconnect in the data. So we have to look at the policies that we're using on MPD. We have to look at the partnerships that are in place, the neighborhood watches our break, and we bring the community in as well. But how are we attacking the whole thing of poverty? We can't talk about it separately.
I have one last question, and my colleagues will pick it up. And this question concerns population loss. And over two decades, Memphis has had an erosion of population. We started, at least, to stabilize that recently, but we've had this erosion over two decades while our neighbor to the, to the east in Nashville is seeing a rise in population into the term of, you know, many hundreds every month, if not thousands every month. What can we do to reverse that in Memphis? I dare say that some of your classmates from high school or college have also left Memphis, although you elected to stay. What can we do to get more people want to move to Memphis or stay in Memphis? What would you do as a representative to try and reverse that trend? And I'll start with you, Michael.
Okay. I don't think in Memphis we have a problem with people moving here. I meet people every day who have, you know, been attracted to Memphis, who moved to Memphis. But what we as a city need to work on is attracting the Memphis to stay. So we have no issue with having jobs being attractive for those on the outside, new housing being built that, quite frankly, can't be afforded by many of the people I know, including myself, in the areas in which I serve. But we have not done a good job to attract the Memphis to stay here. So when we talk about millennials and Gen Xers, we look at what jobs are provided, what college and career paths are being afforded to them, where the housing is and where it's being built up. We aren't building in our neighborhoods, we aren't investing in our neighborhoods in, in our most impoverished parts of the cities. We are not attracting the people who are here to want to remain in Memphis and build it up for the youth that are already here. And quite frankly, and I said, I'm in high school, 11th and 12th graders tell me every day, the main thing that comes out of there is, I can't wait to get out of Memphis. And you say, why? And you say, well, there's no opportunity here, there's nothing to do, there's no jobs. My street has been going down since I can remember. Everything's being closed around me, and I feel like I can't go to the areas in which people look as though they're having the most fun and entertainment. So you have to think about, what are we doing to attract people to stay here? Now, people are coming here, no doubt. Jared, I believe you moved here a few years before. But people are attracted here, but how can we keep the Memphis here to feel like this city is for me, is going to support me, is going to give me what I need and what I deserve, especially in District Seven, and it's going to leave me something where I can start building generational wealth, where I can start building a real platform, so my children might be here as well.
Same question to you, Jared.
Well, I, first of all, to feed a little bit on that last question that we had, I, I think education is also still the root cause of even poverty. Because when you have good school systems and education, poverty deters. Because that's something that I believe in strongly. If you have the right education and the right opportunities, you do cure poverty, which lowers crime. I agree on that part, too. To this question, we do have an issue with people moving here, because we aren't growing as a city as we should. A lot, there are people that move here, I meet people that move here, but it's not near the same rate of every other major city in the Southeast United States. Nashville grows about 88 people a day. It's an astronomical rate. We have sustained our population of 652,000 by expansion and annexation. That also causes urban sprawl, which causes your tax base and your tax dollars to have to go toward infrastructure to outreach the furthest lying parts of the city, which is not the most effective for your tax dollars. When you have to extend sewer lines and police services all the way out to Highway 64 because you're trying to take in houses through annexation, that is not the best way to capitalize on your tax dollars. We need to be, start being investing more toward, like, in the neighborhoods that need it most. We're giving these pilots to developers to help promote growth and promote programs, but we also need to help our neighborhoods that need revitalization and, and development as well. If we can go to these developers and say, okay, let's take tax incremental financing areas, the new federal opportunity zones, you take programs like that and you say, okay, now that we have this tip in Uptown, in North Memphis, in Smoky City, how can we capitalize that? Issue out RFPs, request for proposals, to developers and say, this is what we will do, this is how we will incentivize if you will come into these neighborhoods. Build new housing, but make sure that the people that are already there have a chance to own homes and stay in their communities. And we'll do that, we'll ask them, we'll give you these incentives, we'll help with these developments, as long as you make a commitment towards the people that are already there. Right now, we don't have enough of that. We're developing all these big developments in Midtown and Downtown. One-bedroom condos are going for $1,800 a month. How are people in these communities going to afford that? They can't. And that's the issue, that's why the people in Smoky City, Klondike, Douglas, Hollywood, Frazier, a lot of these people are moving in, these outside developers, and they're pushing them out of their neighborhoods. And we can't stand for that any longer as the city of Memphis. The biggest thing is retaining jobs and helping people that live here, stay here. The people like Michael said, I agree with her on that aspect. The people like Michael said, I agree with her on that aspect. We have tons of people that I meet that I'm friends with that live here in Memphis. I've lived here nearly 10 years now. I came here through Lowe's Home Centers, I was a business, a senior manager for them. I met, I had 250 people per store and there's six Lowe's stores in here. I met a lot of Memphisans my first year here. I met them and they said, yeah, we would love to just get out of here. Why? They don't feel like the opportunity's here. They don't feel like there's enough care and heart for them in their neighborhood. There's not enough opportunity for them to grow beyond the basic jobs. There's not a county that supports or a city that supports $15 an hour so that they can make a livable wage. You go to move off to Atlanta, you're going to make a livable wage there. But you're also going to fight the problem that we're starting to see here and that's the rise in rents and the developments that aren't reaching the communities that are here. So to retain population is a big key. We have to develop programs, we have to develop jobs, we have to develop developments that we keep people here that give them the opportunity to make an honest, good living. And we also need to make sure that we're fighting our crime that is a born in our side for companies and people alike wanting to choose Memphis as their new home.
This is a good segue to my colleague, I take that.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First, you both talk about District Seven, the lack of progress, the lack of service, high politicians to effect any change in neighborhoods such as Smoky City, Klondike, New Chicago. I gather that you think this is not something that has resulted in the last four years and it goes back much farther than four years or eight years. And I would guess that people who would have sat on the council at the time Firestone closed were saying much the same thing that you're saying today. We need more services, better education, more poverty programs. Why is it so difficult, do you think, for people in the Memphis City Council to effect change in a place like Smoky City or Klondike? What is it that makes it so difficult to actually create the kind of change that gets to what you're talking about? Livable apartments, livable streets, affordable wage, affordable housing and livable wages? What is so difficult about Memphis that makes change hard to get? Jared?
I don't think it's difficult, that's why I'm wanting to run for office. I think it's about being accountable, holding yourself accountable for the position that you seek, your people holding you accountable for the people that you seek and being attentive and being effective as a councilman. First of all, the biggest part of the job is showing up and listening and being there for your constituents. I sat next to an empty spot at the MICA meeting on Sunday with the current councilman's names on it. Sat right next to an empty chair with his name tag. That's the prime example of why it seems, like you said, to be hard, but it's not. Because it's made a matter of just showing up and being there, fighting for jobs to come to the district. When you go, one of the things I think we need to do is like the Firestone.